Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February abridged version of our open meeting of the Northborough School Committee. Today is February 13th and the time is now 6:04 PM. As we're trying to do a makeup from last week, this evening, we're just going to do the abridged version. So we're going to leap right into superintendent's report to the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a special open meeting and tonight it's intended to review the recommended budget. As we know, it's nice to have a good budget voted by March 1st. I think the town really appreciates that. And so, the first item on the superintendent's report to the committee is an update on enrollments. And before you this evening is the latest assessment of our student, update on the redistribution of students as supports our class size policy, and also the most current projections for FY '19. As we discussed last month, this evening, we are formally closing and capping a couple sections. One of the things that I did want to note is that this time last year, and it's almost to the actual day, it was February 6th last year when we, February 10th, when we talked about this as part of the budget process, we had nine grades capped. This year, at this point, we have five grades capped. So they're so noted in red, I'll just review them for the community. We're looking at a switch, a shift at Lincoln Street. We had seven sets of siblings this year that were part of our neighborhood school redistricting. We had 24 who remained in the placements that they began the school year in, and we had 10 students who returned to their neighborhood schools. That was not enough to reduce enrollments in the other three, but just enough to shift enrollments to Lincoln Street. And so, we have added a third grade to Lincoln Street. One of the interesting points as we look at the red caps, which is kindergarten at Lincoln Street, first grade at Lincoln Street, and third grade at Proctor, and second and fifth at Z School, is that while it's important to know where we are capped, it's also important to know where we have places to place students. And so, as we look at this list, we have openings at all grade levels, and third grade, as we remember, was second grade this year, and we did see a spike in enrollments in third grade, in second grade, which will be next year's third grade. So adding that third teacher at Lincoln Street also then opens up some placements for students who might be moving in to grade three. So overall, we've reached out to those 34 students. I also want to thank Nancy Bissettigan for her relentless effort in making sure these numbers are accurate. She's in constant contact with the schools. And as far as registration, if the grade is not capped at the school, enrollment will take place at the school until we reach cap. So you can imagine, there's a lot of conversation between Central and our schools, just keeping one another updated in terms of where students may be enrolling. And once that grade is capped, the Central Office will be keeping a waitlist. So already, we do have some students that might be waitlisted. We're beginning our list immediately. We have, we will not make decisions in terms of where we're going to place students until we have a better picture of the overall landscape, just as we did last year. So I am pleased to say that I think this is going into year three of our class size policy, and the fact that we have fewer grades capped this time this year as opposed to last year does show that our enrollments are continuing to shift. And just again, want to thank the principals for being diligent and vigilant with our numbers, and all the school administrative assistants too, because it does take everybody being very collaborative to make this policy work and work well. In the third year, you know, I think we're over the hurdle of explaining that this is a new policy, and we certainly saw that this year. I'm always happy to see more students in our classrooms, but certainly hoping we don't see the spike that we did over the summer this year. So we're, we're in good shape at this point in time, and this will be, again, part of our update every month. But this information is important to have at this point in our budget process, and for us, the time of getting that information was perfect timing because it did affect our staffing model. And so, holding true to our policy, which is going back and giving them an opportunity to either return or not return to the neighborhood school, worked well again this year. We've got all responses by the due date for the most part, and it was in time for us to make those staffing decisions, which was good.
So this is the first time this school year that we've seen projected enrollments for fiscal year '19. You anticipate that we'll be able to see this ongoing for the rest of
Absolutely.
This school year?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Right.
Yep. So I thank the school committee for their continued support.
Thanks for the update. I was looking forward to seeing fiscal year '19 projections. So I'll open up to all the members. Any questions in regards to enrollments?
Probably missed it, but did some people choose to?
Yeah, yes.
How did that part go?
So we had 34 folks that we reached out to in terms of movement, because they were redistrict. We had 24 who remained in, chose to remain in their neighborhood school, and we had 10 who returned to, we had 24 who chose to stay in the neighborhood school they were initially placed.
Reassigned to.
And we had 10 who chose to return to their neighborhood school. Just enough to maintain sizes in the buildings where the students remained, but just enough to influence staffing change at Lincoln Street. And another just interesting note is that we had seven sets of siblings. It doesn't mean they were twins. We had, I think we had a triplet in there, three, a trifecta there, three from the same family that moved in. So that dynamic in and of itself is interesting, because while we may have space at one grade, it's difficult to keep the siblings together, but we've made that part of our, of our policy for all the right reasons, and we've been able to hold true to that, to the language of the policy and the intent of it. So interesting dynamic. It's twice as many as last year. And last year, we had half the number of students redistrict overall, and significantly at, in terms of a percentage, returning to their neighborhood school. So this year was more students overall and more students returning to their neighborhood school. So busing will be interesting again, but one of the things that we hope to do this year, which will be the first time we've ever done this, is shift the responsibility of the routing to our bus company, and to give them the routes earlier on and not in the summer, to see how they do with that. And we're hoping to transfer the files. For the most part, we know 95% of the students who will be attending our schools, we don't see a lot of enrollment changes, and see what they do with the routes. Because as we know, we did have some concerns at the beginning of last year, so hopefully this will help mitigate some of that anxiety at the beginning of the year.
Any other questions from committee members?
Also, in your packet is the January 31st expenditure report. We are being, you know, it's March for the most part, and we see the next budget, we will be in March, and we are keeping a very watchful eye over the budget. We do still see fluctuations in special education, and it is not uncommon for us to even realize a, a, there should be, some of you have them and some of you don't. It's not uncommon for us to still continue to see shifts in placements, so we're being very, very mindful of this bottom line. I also want to thank the building principals, because we have had discussions about freezing the budget at this point, and that doesn't mean we're not approving POs for essential purchases, but it's just something that we do as a collaborative effort to make sure that we close out this year in a good place. So I thank you once again for your cooperation. So tonight, we would like a vote to approve until audited.
So moved. Second. Susan, any other comments, questions, discussion, all in favor?
You do have the budget goals in your packet. We're going to review them in just a minute as we move towards the recommended budget. And also, we do have a date for appropriations, our meeting with appropriations. It is Saturday, November, November, Saturday, February 24th. And we believe it's at 8 o'clock, or we gather at 8, we usually begin around 8:30, so. And that's held at the town hall.
And you expect K-8 to go first?
K-8, yes.
Okay.
Unless they change it. But generally, K-8 is first.
Okay.
And then followed by region.
Only on K-8 at this time?
Yep. I will definitely confirm the time and send it out to everybody.
Thank you.
It's a great opportunity, I think, to celebrate all the great work that we do in our schools, all the, the work of the leadership team, our teachers, and present a budget that was very thoughtfully and mindfully planned, and will be moved forward this night, tonight.
It's posted, so.
We will post it. The school committee will be present.
So the appropriations posted meeting as well. So it's great. Come if you can, if you can make it that morning. Any questions on the budget calendar, discussion, bearing none? We can either move back to budget goals or move on to recommended budget.
So the budget goals is, will actually be reviewed with the discussion about the recommended budget.
Okay.
So we did have a preliminary budget in January, and I did introduce what our target range was from the town, and I think it's important to note that always throughout the budget process, we are mindful of our budget goals. Before you, this evening, there is a recommended budget, which is a synopsis of the, a presentation of each and every line item. You'll also note that there is a summary document included in that packet, and that summary document only reflects the line items that have had a change. As I mentioned in the preliminary budget, we moved into this budget season with a mindset of level services and a supplemental increase only for extraordinary purchases, or purchases that the building principals felt were necessary to continue the good work above and beyond the level service budget. And so, the line item synopsis is broken down by regular ed and special ed. We can see overall, our special ed budget and our regular ed budget's percent of increases are reflected in this document. Overall, the regular ed budget went up 1.6%, which really speaks to the good work of the entire leadership team trying to bring this budget within range. When you consider that the 2% COLA was, or represents the most significant percentage of overall increase in any operational budget, salaries represent about 60 to 70% of the operational budget. And so, to have a 2% COLA on 70% of the budget to come within a regular ed budget increase of 1.6 is pretty phenomenal. And I just want to applaud the building administrators and the central office team for being very creative in this budgeting process. The special ed portion of the budget increased 7.58%, and again, significant impacts are felt with the non-public school programs. We've made significant strides in creating programs in-house that maintain our student population in-house, and there are those circumstances where the need is best met outside of our school district, and that keeps the special ed budget a little bit higher than the regular ed budget in terms of percent of growth. So the two significant impacts on this budget this year, as you would expect in a level service budget, is in fact the increases in COLA in steps and lanes, and also the increase in out-of-district placements. Overall, I feel that we have met our budget goals as stated. We continue to staff in alignment with our class size policy, maintaining our class size policy, and we did just review our K-5 numbers, which are clear indications that we're being very mindful of our staffing requirements within that class size policy. Meeting the needs of all of our learners really does represent the fact that we are moving forward in our second year of both our language-based program and our therapeutic program, and in fact, continue to support that growth while still balancing the need of all students and recognizing that we need to continue to develop in-house programs, but also place students out when it becomes necessary. The professional development that I spoke about to support the investment that we've made in social, emotional staffing is, has been maintained in this budget, so it's basically level serviced, which is a good statement to make, that our professional development continues to support our district needs. And in conversations with Assistant Superintendent Martino, we have identified our focus areas for next year, so the professional development dollars that we have will be concentrated in those areas of focus for next year. Our concern again is the students' ability to keep pace with the new assessment requirements. And so, our technology budget, while somewhat reduced, still offers full compliance with our implementation plan, allowing for the purchase of Chromebooks, making sure our infrastructure supports the MCAS 2.0 testing environment, and to our tech team and to Greg, you know, say thanks and give, you know, applause for the work that they've done to make sure that we continue to move forward with that district initiative. And so, in just a moment, we'll also talk a little bit about our capital assets, and we'll speak to that when we get into the warrant articles. The budget process is, again, reviewed. We review that each and every year, and mindful that in March, we will be having the public hearing on the budget and moving to town meeting. We maintain our device ratio, as I mentioned, and our therapeutic programs. We're mindful that that grant, that very wonderful grant that Malachin wrote two years ago, a year and a half ago, Michelle?
We got it a year ago.
A year ago. Has a sunset provision and two more. Next year is the second of the three-year grant, and so, we're very mindful that we need to think about transitioning those much-needed positions onto budget. We had very minimal employee migration, another way, way to simply put it, no one retired. I think we had one retirement. And each and every year, one of the ways that we've been able to sort of balance the challenge of having an increase yet staying within the target range is capturing the savings on retirements. So this year was a particularly interesting challenge, having no retirements to speak of, but one. So I think that, that speaks to it. As I mentioned last time, you know, we're not, we don't remain stagnant in terms of looking at every aspect of our expenditure and revenue possibilities. We are moving forward with our facility rentals fee analysis, as well as being watchful over the grant funding. Greg and I participated in a very informative state budgeting session this morning, and basically, costs keep increasing and the grants are flat. And so, we know that Northborough receives about $420,000 to $500,000, depending on the year, in grant funding, and we are hoping that the grants at least are flat and not reduced for next year, because our costs keep increasing. And so, the challenge is to find a way to absorb that cost and still maintain the kinds of great staffing and programming that grants support. So we do, we did have some offsets this year in the budget. Again, I did mention that we had one retirement. We had some programmatic shifts in technology, and some grant-funded positions, as I mentioned, were challenged by, and it's a challenge we welcome, we embrace, of maintaining programming that supports all of our students' needs, but also, again, maintaining the reality that students are placed out, and sometimes those placements can be significant in terms of cost. So the overall impact in the line item adjustments is $819,966. We've been able to realize this by looking at our preliminary FY '19 increases, with the COLA considered and without adjustments, we were at about $25,327,12. This year, I've decided to round up and leave off the cents, because I think it makes sense. And of that 1.881995 increase, we offset it in creative reductions and staffing in the amount of $1,62,029. All of that said and done, this budget moving forward increased by $819,966, or a 3.5% incremental increase over FY '18. I might add that that, those special ed numbers in the out-of-district placements in the summary document and in the line item budget that you have received do not include the $842,317 in Circuit Breaker, which also helps to offset the overall cost of special education. We did hear today that our FY '18 receipts, which will be used for FY '20's budget, is still funded at 65%. And while there's been a lot of chatter and a lot of conversation about it, and there needs to continue to be tireless effort to get the state and the governor to move that up to 75%, it's not a reality yet. There are a lot of people that are hoping their percentage increases to where it once was. So we are very, very early in the budget process at the state level. I would say it was somewhat depressing to count the number of boxes that are involved in the budget process, and we're in box one, and there's seven more boxes. And each box is either, you know, a conversation with House, a conversation with Senate, a conversation at Compromise, and so, it's not uncommon for us to have final numbers in August. I have reviewed this with the town administration, and this is what, you know, everyone seems to be comfortable with. I think one of the things that we do appreciate is that we are able to see consistent increases each year. And while we have offsets, we also have increases to match that. So a lot of collaborative effort. I feel confident in this budget, and I'm asking, requesting that the school committee vote to approve this recommended budget this evening.
We just need to take a vote?
I read it into record, public hearing. We are moving this forward to a recommended vote.
So we'll make a recommended vote for a total proposed budget of $24,264,983?
Yes.
For a increase of 3.5% over last year's total budget for overall?
Yes, please.
Any motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jim. Second in by eight. Sorry.
You're good.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, just to thank the team and everybody that was involved in the planning of this, that obviously, this is the hard part, you know, is coming up with something that is fiscally sound and educationally responsible. So this is, I know this is not what we would want, but we have to be happy with, with this and make it work. So again, thank you to everyone in central office and all the principals for, for your input and collaboration with this, and let's get this voted.
Well, before we do, I just want to question a couple of things real quickly. In regards to line item 4120 and 4130 for heating electricity, I see, I see drops. I love reductions. Well, they're not overall reductions though, it's only from the preliminary budget.
Right.
But are we still anticipating some possible benefit from the new possible boiler at Z?
So those reductions are really based on an energy efficiency management contract that was taken up at Z School about three years ago, and it's coming offline. So those were added costs for a period of time because of the repairs, so it's not actually a reduction off of the actual consumption of energy costs. We anticipate that we will see a 20 to 30% savings on the installation of the boiler, and in preparing some information from John, we could realize as much as $15,000 to $20,000 savings on the bills that, and would be more in line with the actual expenditures of the other schools.
Okay.
So, you know, yes.
Not a great savings, but it could help offset
Right.
Some other energy increase, as I look at my electric bill, and it continues to go up. And I just want to mention really quickly that last night's board is, they did discuss at length the letter to the legislators, and Circuit Breaker is number one.
Right.
They're just waiting for some additional numbers from you to move forward on that, and they are expecting the legislators to come in, I believe, so anybody, everyone can mark their calendars, on Monday, March 26th.
And they do have those numbers, so I think they should be all set.
Oh, fantastic.
Yes.
Right, so any other discussion or questions on the budget? All in favor, under motion? unanimous? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you to all of the school committee members for your support. It's an interesting process, and I think we've arrived at a point where we're feeling comfortable moving into FY '19.
Okay. So that moves us right into
Yes, it does.
And my question actually led right into approval of warrant articles, and we'll do it in the capital warrant article. Is that been prepared? Is we that far ahead that you think this is going to be on the docket for town meeting?
So, yes. Generally, I mean, I have some language, but tonight, we generally just identify who might read the two, so we can bring the, read the actual language into record next month. I am happy to report that John Cudair, I chatted with him a few minutes ago, just to make sure there were no changes. So we will see the $357,000. It went up $7,000 from the last time we moved this forward. The new boiler will be on the warrant, and it will be paid from free cash without further appropriation, so we're, I'm thrilled.
I'll volunteer to read that.
It's, it's exciting. And again, I think it speaks to the town's overall support of our schools.
Perhaps we can have another member of the committee volunteer to read the warrant article for the $24,264,983 that we just voted on tonight. I'm volunteered.
Sure.
Thank you.
And we'll be in for the discussion on those in our next, hopefully not snowed-out meeting in March. So any other items?
The capital improvement plan was really just distribution. It's something that we generally move forward, but I think it ties very nicely into the fact that this, the Z boiler was moved forward in the capital improvement plan. And I think the need was appreciated and certainly supported by the town.
And, and to do it, and to have possibly some energy savings because of that is definitely a win-win.
Right.
That'd be great, still in capital, but we've seen some operational savings. Fantastic. Question, John?
Do we have to vote on the action of the minutes from the January 3rd meeting?
It is not on our, I was not on the posted agenda
No.
For this evening.
We can vote on them at the
At the March.
At the March.
Okay, because I just had the agenda from February 7th, and it was one of the first ones, so.
I know, don't have a copy of it, but I saw it before I left, and I told it was no essential.
Okay.
Just sort of lifted section D.
So we'll do that in March?
Yes.
The revised agenda.
And, but there is, is there
Audience sharing.
Audience sharing is on the agenda, so if the audience would like to share.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Does anyone have anything to share?
They're saving it for the March members.
Yes.
When everybody's all together, so we can all appreciate what they have to share.
I went to a band of Ramo last night, and it was wonderful. The students did well. I've never been to one before. It was my first one, and I was really impressed, just watching the progression. My youngest is in fifth grade, so I look forward to hopefully having her continue through the program, and I really enjoyed it. It was very good.
I was there as well.
Great.
I agree. To watch the change over time is, really speaks to the music program and the pipeline that, that we have, so. A lot of work goes into those, those groups and getting them to that level, so.
We did have a speaker series last week, Monday of last week, and it actually happened to be on music and neuroscience. I nicknamed it "The Neuroscience of Music." I don't know what her official title was, Dr. Holland, but it was fantastic, and she spoke often of the benefits of not just listening to music, but actually composing, creating, playing an instrument, and what it can do to a young mind, to a still-developing mind. mind, and how important it is that they get this as a very young, when they're students, when they're students, when they're children. It was really, I'm glad we have the speaker series. I'm happy to say a number of our music educators, a number of our music teachers from our K8, Northborough K8, were there. It was nice to see them come to the event, and it was, I found it very educational, which was fantastic. It's my opinion. So thank you for having that. Any other?
Nope.
Sharing? Sharing?
Jen, you had a great day today.
You did.
Do you want to save it, or do you want to, at the Mass Cultural?
Would you like me to?
I think we need to just end on a high note.
There's no pressure at all.
Well, we did- It ties so nicely into the celebration of the arts, which they went out of their way to say is alive and well in our district, which is so not the case in many other districts, that we really invest and celebrate-
Yeah.
-our students in every way.
Yeah, so the committee had, you had signed off on our receipt of a grant through the Mass Cultural Council to bring in a Japanese storyteller as an artist in residence. So she's been with us since January, and today was the culminating event, which was a school-wide assembly where students shared the work that they've done with her over the past month and a half, through songs, through stories, through artwork. And it was just a great celebration, and the students have learned an incredible amount about geometry, which ordinarily, they would have learned in a very satisfactory way from their own classroom teachers, but it was a different voice and a different means of presentation. And the woman who came in, Motoko, was just incredibly dynamic and really garnered a lot of interest on the part of our students. So today was the big thing, and it was televised by Northborough Cable. So at your leisure, you'll have an opportunity to see the whole program from soup to nuts, but it was a great, great opportunity for us.
Thank you.
Great.
Christine and Greg were able to be there, so it was nice, nice to have some central office support for us, too.
It was interesting how they explained geometry. I wish I had that when I was in high school with the same simple explanation, but the storytelling and just, you know, weaving in the multiple disciplines was tremendous. It was exciting. And just the courage of the kids, the young ones, to get up and share their wisdom with their classmates was pretty amazing.
It was, it was great.
Very proud of their work.
They are.
You can tell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So any other business to come before the committee this evening? Bearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We do have warrant articles to sign.
Okay.
I'm with you, Jerry.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.